So, welcome to the City Council Public Safety Committee. Today is August seventeen twenty twenty-one. This meeting will be a remote meeting due to COVID-nineteen restrictions. We're gonna call this meeting to order. We do have, do you guys approve meeting minutes last time or no?
We did.
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we approved one set of minutes.
We did approve June's minutes.
June first, okay, that's perfect.
I'll send that to the park.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. I have it in my notes here. I didn't know you guys approved it. Perfect. Public speak time. We don't have anyone here. At least one of the councilor wanna say something like a public. Usually, we didn't do that. So, um, do you have Salem, do you have something about the safety of the sidewalks through the South Street?
So, I don't have anything in particular yet, other than I just wanna be able to have the opportunity in committee for us to be able to go back to the, the report, which kind of highlighted the fact that the sidewalk from South Street to Main Street, North Main Street, I guess, it is been paved over and is being used as a parking lot. So, if you are, if you are a person coming from the, uh, the side of South Street that is across from College Highway Variety and you have to cross Route ten, when you do that, say you're a kid walking to school and there's people using College Highway Variety, you have to walk into the road in order to stay on this, like to, you know, stay on that side of the street and there's no sidewalk on the other side of the street. So, yeah, go ahead, Lindsay.
I have photos if you want me to share it on my computer.
Yeah, I mean, and I don't know how deep we're gonna get into that today. I just wanna, you know, I just want us to be able to have us on our radar. So, I, I I do know that College Highway Variety at this moment has a relatively large parking area in the rear of the building. And right now, the only car that I've seen consistently parked there is a, a car that's not registered. It doesn't have plates or anything. It's just like, it's like a broken down car. You know, so it's not like they don't have options for people to park. And so, you know, I, I think that this first, I mean, I, this first came to my attention when the report came out and I was like, oh, I need to go back to this, but you know, now we got really focused on stop sign and you know, uh, you know, try like safety mitigation for cars. And the pedestrian piece kind of fell out of my head. And so, I just wanted to make sure that we keep that on the forefront because I feel like especially with the new school, we might have younger kids walking to school from that part of town. You know, and it's, as public safety, we should be aware of that and see if we can figure out a way to help mitigate any potential risks to pedestrians.
Okay. Yeah, Lindsay.
Well, I just, I'll email you the photos. And I don't know if you heard it from the same resident that I did, because I always reached out to by a precinct four resident as well. And that was what he was expressing is he was already thinking about, he's a young child. He's already planning to walk with groups to school. And right now, it doesn't, it's not safe.
Not safe.
It is possible, and Salem, you can tell me that you've been in the council for quite a bit. Is it is possible to do a side visit with DPW director and see how we can address this issue?
I think that would be a really good, uh, that would be a good step to take, for sure. And I would say probably who the people we'd want is we'd want Greg Nuttman and we'd want Chief Alberdi as well.
Okay.
You know, so we can take a look at.
Any particular time during the day that, that you guys are available? I'm, I'm not talking now the date per se, but it's easier if I, I ask the chief and Greg, hey, you know, our window is between three to five Mondays and Tuesdays or something like that. So, that way I can arrange something with them.
Yeah, I mean, for once school starts, my, my school time has changed. So, I'm not gonna be getting out until like three thirty.
Okay.
Once school starts, but before school starts, uh, you know, so if we can, if we can fit this in before the second week of September, then I might be able to, to do it at a different time.
Okay.
If you, can I share the photos real quick just for the?
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, here's the, the, um, this is what the area that Salem was talking about.
Okay.
See, you can see on the side there, there's, so if you cross the street, then you're just like in the driveway.
Parking lot, yeah. And you can see, you know, one of the things that's really interesting about this, this, I don't know how this building was built, but if you look at the space between the edge of the building and the, the curb cut, I mean, that building, the edge of that building is probably on city property. Because, you know, when we talk about the edge of the road, city usually owns about three feet off this, the edge of the road. You know, so if it's not on city property, it's like pretty close.
It is pretty close, yes.
Yeah.
All right, what I'm gonna do is I will contact the chief and Greg and schedule a side visit and we can go there and probably, probably get back. It will be a good idea to, to see that building.
Yeah, I think so too, because I don't know if this, this would be part of like, you know, their safe place, the schools. He's keeping an eye on that. So, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, so I put in my notes. As soon I have a couple dates with them, so I will share it to you both and we can choose a date to go to the side visit. Yep. All right, gonna move now to the Mayor's Pledge to Remaining Policing Report. I do receive, and I saw you email Salem. We, I do receive email from Lindsay and from you. So, that way we can start discussing while we here in our conversation with the public. And after we read the recommendation from this report too. I'm going to start saying the, I think our purview in this is just to review the, the report that being sent it to us by the mayor. Because this report was sent it to the mayor and the, the mayor sent it to us, the way they can review it. And if we have to add something or eliminate something, or she wanna know what we think about the, the, the report, right? And I think we are in that point now that we can start discussing recommendation by recommendation and what we think about it. I will let you share your, your thinking about every recommendation. Any of you two wanna start?
I can, I can start, um, since I'm gonna.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, so here, let me just share my screen and can you guys see that all right?
Yes, great.
All right, perfect. Is it big enough?
Yeah, for me it is. I have a good screen.
All right, cool.
And I have glasses.
Yeah, 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 me too. Um, so, you know, basically, I, I, I kind of wrote a prologue here. And, and I'll just read it on, and just, just my impressions of, you know, where we were. So, so as East, as members of the East Hampton City Council, we are charged to review the Mayor's Pledge work group report to hear testimony from the public and those who are involved with this creation. This is my take after listening and processing. As the process moved forward, it was clear that members of the public were participating, felt divided on the topic of policing. This is no surprise. As the national landscape that spurred this report is highly charged and volatile and rightly so. Unfortunately, much of the conversation started with assumptions. All police are bad. Any change of policy to EPD is an attack on the police. It was framed as a battle of two different camps. Thankfully, there were members of the public, the police and those involved in the report who knew that if we really want to do and be better, we need to be collaborative. Beginning to understand our neighbors' perspectives as we move forward as a community to actually solve the issues that we in East Hampton face is critical. The report is a good starting point and has many very good recommendations to help increase transparency and improve policy and to inform the public perception of the role of East Hampton Police Department. I understand there could be apprehension with some of the recommendations from, from the EPD. I think that is normal. Any professional will get defensive if the spotlight shifts to their practices and questions them. Change is an incremental process that oftentimes is resisted. However, with community support and collaboration and the knowledge that we are in this together, that fear and resistance can change and be mitigated. With a collaborative approach and not the two camp adversarial approach, we can address any issues that exist and move forward together to improve policing in East Hampton. As a council committee, we are not in a position to change policy or tell the police department or mayor what to do. Whoever, we are in an advisory role and can affirm or, and recommend actions or policies. In that capacity, I will highlight the recommend, recommendations that I feel are most relevant and impactful from the report. Also wanna acknowledge the hard work that was put into the report and the quality of the report, which I think is very high. Thanks to, to all those involved. So, thanks Omar for participating in that. Yeah. So, and so basically what I did was I just went through each recommendation and kind of just pulled out what I thought were like the, the important points. And obviously, there was no way, there was no way I could get all of them. I mean, the report is pretty comprehensive. So, this is just my take. So, number, the first recommendation, uh, you know, invest in community-led non-police responses to health and safety concerns. This is an important step in allowing the police to do what they are trained to do, which is not being mental health professionals. Police are not mental health or addiction professionals. I believe that taking steps to make sure that East Hampton Police Department can have the support from professionals that are not armed to de-escalate situations is critical. I like the peer support approach. However, I understand that in the current budget climate, there can be obstacles to creating an entirely new city department. I think that the progress we have made so far with the current Police Service Agency partnership is a great start. You know, I don't think that it's the end-all, but I think this is a, you know, the agreement that the police have entered into recently is a really good place to, to begin. So, as, and the second one, I'm gonna actually move this down. So, I don't like it when it's not on the same page. Engage in robust, robust data collection, analysis and regular reporting. I feel that this recommendation is a critical step in moving forward with all of the recommendations in this report. With good data collection, we can track trends and patterns that can inform the approach that we need to take for all other recommendations. I'm hopeful that this recommendation is fully implemented and funded by the city as it is such a critical piece of the puzzle. So, this one, I, I think that, uh, that, you know, I don't think I'm alone in thinking this, you know, understanding where we're at as far as practices and, and recording and, and keeping track of data is gonna be so important. You know, and, and especially as we look at the next piece, I talk about the Act Relative to Justice Equity and Accountability in Law Enforcement. And I think that in order to be able to sync up with that, we need to make sure our data reporting is in a good place. And so, that brings us to number three, strengthen oversight. So, oversight is an important piece of reform. Uh, and I think that the state bill S-two-nine-six-three, an act relative to the justice, quality, accountability and law enforcement in the Commonwealth, will increase that oversight and accountability. However, we need to be on board as a, as a city. And as a city, increase our oversight to be able to coordinate with the new state law. I'm torn on how this should be accomplished. However, I think that at least there should be an easy online written or phone complaint process that is outside of the department and independent. You know, I, I think that was one of the things that kind of stood out to me is like, if the only complaint you can make is to the people you're complaining about, that, that could be problematic. And so then.
A hundred percent.
Yeah. Number engage in intentional, regular communication and, oh, in collaboration. I've said communication twice. Sorry. Mosquito. With community, understand and codify safety needs and develop responses. I think that, and I think that the East Hampton Police Department has done a good job with this, you know, of emphasizing community policing. I think the CRC can be a great tool to assist when they're ready. I know that many might have had negative experiences with police and there should be a concerted effort to police with empathy and truly serve and protect. I was thinking about this the other day. This, you know, it's like, of, some of the times I've had interactions with police, they've, they've postured in a kind of angry way. And I think that that perception to the public, and, and it's not necessarily their, their fault. It's just that when you're in a disciplinary role and you're trying to get compliance, you know, the, the posturing of being, you know, uh, forceful and, and, and in control is what naturally is gonna come forward. But I think that paradigm is something that we need to examine. Because if we can shift that to like, you know, understanding and, and the being, instead of like being anger being the first response when you interact with somebody, like empathy being the first response would change the, the policing dynamic a hundred and eighty degrees. And, and, and I, and I'm not an expert on police, but I am an, I am an expert on people in some respects. Because I deal with so many of them and I can tell you as, as my role, when I'm in a disciplinary situation as, you know, the last twenty years of being an educator, you're gonna get better response with empathy than you are gonna be, get a response with anger. And that's just, that's just human nature. So, I think that piece is an important piece. So, I think the, uh, let me see, uh, the collaboration with community can bring our mutual responsibility to the forefront and that collaboration can bring us back on the same team. You know, it's like, it's, it's not us and them. Like, we, we all want our community to be safe. We all want there to be less crime. We, you know, and, but everybody has a, a piece of that responsibility. And, you know, so like getting to a place where we can say, oh, we're all in this together, I think is gonna, and if I had the answer to how to do that, I would be a very, very wealthy person, probably. But, um, anyway, so, uh, number five, examining police culture and training. And, you know, this one was really, you know, the surprising to me, not surprising, I mean, I knew it, but, but like learning that white supremacist groups were actively recruiting members to become police officers all over the country. David Duke was telling people at rallies to go be police officers. Because then, then you could like, you know, do whatever you wanted, um, as it related to people of color. That was, that's, so for me, any sort of affiliation with, um, you know, with a white supremacist group or any support, like that should be an automatic disqualification. And I think that our policies need to reflect that. And, and I think that training is, is gonna be a key to progress. I mean, uh, training needs to be high quality. It needs to be, um, you know, the frequency of it needs to be like relatively often. Uh, and it needs to be training towards things that are going to improve the community's interaction with law enforcement. So, I think that that piece is really important. Uh, and then educate and inform the East Hampton community about the revised use of force policy. Uh, I think it's important as we move into the future, especially as the landscape of policing in the country is still steeped in the use of force. Um, I feel that this is one area in our community that we've been able to find peaceful solutions to. It should be held up as a positive attribute of our police department. I think East Hampton Police Department's done a good job with, you know, de-escalating situations. I know that there was, you know, a mental health emergency where there was someone in the street, like in the last couple of months and they were able to like de-escalate and not have to use any force. I think that's great. Like, we should, we should acknowledge those situations and, and highlight those. And, and show the good work that has been done and hopefully encourage that so we can avoid, you know, the really, I don't know if you guys heard, I think it was maybe yesterday, the day before, a, a police officer shot in Massachusetts, shot a woman with a knife. Uh, he went into her house, she had a knife and he, and he shot her. You know, I mean, she could have been lunging at him, but you know, knife versus gun, you're, you know, like, we wanna avoid those situations. We wanna make sure that, you know, we, uh, are able to find ourselves in positions where we can not have to use force and find all of the, the, you know, peaceful solutions before we move to that area. So, uh, and finally, I said, the Mayor's Pledge is a great resource to help us move forward and should be used by the East Hampton Police Department, the Mayor's Office and the City Council as a starting point to keep us moving forward in the right direction. This is not something that should be hoisted on the police as another box to check, but should be a collaborative effort of the entire city to make meaningful change that will improve the lives of all residents. So, that's, that's what I, that's what I came out with. So, hopefully that some of it's coherent and, and it doesn't seem like, um, too much, but, um, those, those were my thoughts as, as we went through the process.
I have to admit you that I love it.
Oh, well, thanks.
I, I love it. I will, um, probably, and I will do the same with, with the Lindsay's report is probably I'm gonna use a lot of your language and I'm gonna add some of my language and add of Lindsay's language, but I think you hit it right on the point.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. And, and I, and I think that's what this, this, this is for us to be able to help us, you know, um, bring it forward and, and, and find the, the language that we wanna use. So, feel free to take any piece of it in any way you want.
I'm also happy to help with the writing and synthesis, Omar, if you'd like.
Perfect. Yeah, no, I do. Um, do you wanna go now, Lindsay?
Sure. I mean, I'll just start off by saying I completely agree with, uh, everything in Salem's reflections. And, yeah, it was really difficult hearing the, like, how adversarial it got. And I don't think it needs to be that way. I, like, your two points that you had right at the beginning, like, like, not all police are bad, but all change isn't bad either. And so, like, let's just be able to talk about it in a way. So, I thank you for that. And I'm gonna get mine. Hold on. So, I'm very like action-oriented and networky. So, um, I started by really just, like, when we hand this off to the mayor, I wanna give her like, hear, like, hand her something that she can just get going with. Through, um, like researching and talking to Professor Hendricks, um, I was led to Dr. Barao. Um, and I reached out to her at Westfield State and had a meeting with her. Um, I'll read my thing, I'm, I'll read my report, but basically, I think the number one priority should be recommendation number two is the data because that's gonna feed everything else. Well, I think what we found in some of our conversations where we didn't, weren't actually, we weren't all dealing with the same data. We didn't have the data to talk about. And even with the relational, the relationship between members of the community that have a lot of distrust towards the police, a lot of it is that there's a lack of transparency in data. And I, and I, you know, I will take the, the optimistic approach, thought on that is that, well, we've heard that their software doesn't really, isn't conducive to sharing data. It's for data between departments. And so, and our website, as you know, has not been good. We just had a new one. So, and it takes human resources to produce the data that you need. And it's not like you can just ask this cop, you know, one of your officers to do it in, you know, two hours out of the week. It's, it's, so, so as a result of the Mayor's like pledge listening sessions, I heard there are many people in our community who feel uncomfortable with EPD either due to personal experience with the East Hampton Police, negative experiences with other police departments or due to the historical and ongoing violence perpetrated on Black and Brown people by police across the nation. There are many people who are very happy with the East Hampton Police Department and have had only positive experience with EPD and are strong supporters of the EPD. Um, many people feel that alternatives to policing to address mental health and drug abuse issues need to be explored and that there's not enough data and sharing of data to have substantive conversations around areas of bias, police oversight or policy changes. So, much of the testimony was very passionate, emotionally charged, and we as city representatives need to find a way to hold all the truths. I would propose the following action steps as a result of the Mayor's Pledge Report and the Listening Sessions. The number one priority should be recommendation number two, engage in robust data collection, analysis and regular reporting. The data questions should be determined collaboratively by diverse cross-section of residents with East Hampton Police Officers. So, kind of like action research. Research conducted by a third party, an academic institution dedicated to academic integrity and a knowledge of policing. Data shared regularly with the community via the website and reporting sessions. The following positive outcomes could happen, building trust with the community. Base policy initiatives on open and shared data. Create an ongoing relationship with an academic and academic institution. So, um, so I'm already exploring how that could happen. I met with Dr. Lisa Barao. She authored, co-authored an intimate, independent climate study that Harvard Police Department. It's really well done. You can tell she built a lot of trust. She's a very, um, respected scholar at our, you know, local state institution. So, um, I think by addressing recommendation number two, we have labeled the data informed ways forward with one, four and five. And as regards to recommendation number three, strengthen oversight, I recommend that the city hire an independent civilian investigator who has experience working in police departments, such as like a retired police officer. The city should reach out to surrounding communities to see if this is a position that can be shared across municipalities to make it more economically feasible. And that the Mayor's Pledge Report provides a comprehensive roadmap for us to follow. I recommend that the Public Safety Committee returns to a regular, regularly to gauge what we accomplish and determine next steps. So, I wanna also share. Um, this is the letter of intent from Dr. Lisa Barao. She would be pleased to partner with our city. Um, she thinks this would be, um, a good academic, you know, endeavor for her as well as for graduate students at Westfield State to expand data collection, analysis and recording efforts. She could see, when I spoke with her, she could see being involved with the community and police officers to help generate the research questions, um, what data the police and community members would like to see. And then in terms of long-term partnerships, that Westfield State could also benefit from their partnership with us by having interns that work regularly with our police department. So, I was really excited that she was really interested in working with us. And, um, yeah, so I'm hoping that that is, um, one area that we can like move forward. If the mayor gets the recommendation, would be interested in moving forward. So, that's all. I'll stop.
I think that's great. You know, I don't know if you guys, I'm pretty sure that Chief Alberdi is, uh, is, teaches at Westfield State as well.
He does, yeah, he does. And I, I spoke with her. She doesn't know him, but, um, she just, uh, yeah, so.
I mean, it sounds like that would be a really good.
Good partnership, because he works there.
Yeah, if he's collaborating with people that he, you know, teaches with or, you know, has a, a rapport or whatever, you know, if it's the department even, it, I think that could be, you know, potentially helpful and, 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 you know, for acceptance. So.
Exactly. And then here's some, she was just already brainstorming, um, some preliminary data that she would wanna be looking at. And then, um, this is.
Really great that you were able to get in touch with her. Nice job.
Yeah, she was very, and this is like, this is really, I started reading her reports, it's a hundred fifty-five pages, but what I recommend, what I saw in it was just the thoroughness and also the amount of trust. And, um, she must have been able to build within the police to be able to gather this kind of information. So.
And probably what we can do with that report from her is include it as a information package to the mayor when we send this back. And, uh, she can have another, um, view of what all the police departments in our countries are doing.
And also, um, in terms of, uh, I was also talking to her about the best model that they're doing in Boston where they have clinicians that accompany, um, so that's kind of what we were talking about, alternatives to mental health. Um, response and I, and I, I didn't put this in my report, but I find it interesting that, um, just in my reading and talking with her and others is that it's often people will partner with outside agencies, whereas, um, I think there's a lot of benefit to having.
Oh, so like a council derby is coming again?
Oh, yeah. Oh, God. Um, there's a lot of benefit to having mental health, um, or officials or, you know, drug, uh, response, you know, addiction response, people actually within the police department, not always a separate agency. One thing, police are better funded than mental health agencies. But another thing is that when you're talking about culture, and I got this from also speaking to another police chief in another city, that when you're talking about culture, when you have social workers and other people with other skill sets and experience sitting at the same lunch tables and the same meetings, it helps, there's a lot of like, you know, mutual sharing of knowledge and transferring of skills and, um, you know, kind of changing the culture a bit. So, I, I really like to look at, uh, how we could get mental health professionals with civilians within our police department. That's very interesting to me.
Thank you, Lindsay. So, I guess my turn and, um, this is what I have. So, in the process that the, we have carried out in the Public Safety Committee, after listening to the community and evaluate their comments, I have come to the, the recommendation number one should be implemented to, in our city. The CSO program that already solved several police department have implemented must be one that in East Hampton is adopted. And if have, has already been adopted, it seems that the city should expand this program for the benefit of our most vulnerable, vulnerable community members. The trauma that some people had by interacting with the police has caused consequences to these communities. That is why we recommend that to the mayor to take into account this type of, of program to have a less invasive program for the wealth, well-being of mental health of our population. In our committee, we hear that it's important to create a program that is to attend, that the calls that have to do with mental crisis. And I understand that the city does not have an exclusive department to attend this type of situation. But I agree with the report that there was, was sent to the mayor that is, that is, had to be scrutinized by the committee that is necessary, is necessary to start working in changing, changing this. I also find, found in the report and. I also find found in the report and in the sessions that we had. That the committee, that the community, that the government of East Hampton should allied with organizations. That are experts in this area and collaboration to tackle these problems. The city should also invest in call system that is for crisis and mental health services. Where citizens can call without having to use the resource of the police officers. And use the resources that are established to respond, to respond to this crisis. So. That's for recommendation number one. What I want to do is can I, can I kind of include some of the language that you bring Lindsay and my language to. To the report of, of Consul Derby, because I, I think the way that he. Stated is, is, is really good, but I think we, I want to add to that, that I think we should be partnership with. Some expert that we have in our communities, like we have so many programs in our community that I think we should be in a partner with them. And I do think so to the, the. Eventually, and this is just recommendations, that the. The Sampton City should have another call system for that kind of calls. Because now every single call goes to the, to the police department. And not a lot of people feel comfortable to call, to call in there. Yep.
Yeah, well, there are local and national crisis line numbers that. I'm sorry, I'm really a little emotional. My dad, my dad ran a crisis center for many years and was a national expert on crisis intervention and worked alongside police departments in Michigan. So those like in terms of like, I, I always like to think really practically and like, what is our city capable of? And we're pulled to the thread, our tech is a mess, like. Those crisis lines already exist and we can. We can get a, you know, an East Hampton alias number that feeds into it and partner with. You know, just create more of a clear partnership, but I think utilizing, so I totally agree, but I just think it's more like. Those crisis numbers and expertise in crisis already exist and so we need to. Just like more enhance the integration with our community of those resources out there.
Yeah, I, I agree with that and you know, we don't want to have to necessarily reinvent the wheel.
Yeah.
You guys can hear me, right?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure.
So for the recommendation two, what I have is for the second recommendation of this report, we'd found that the community will understand that the police department should be more transparent and sharing, reporting this data. After having listened to the member of the mayor's group committee that prepared this report to the community, I found the following. That is difficult to find clear and accurate data in our police department. It is recommended that you invest more in a system that is the data is easy and clear to get and understand it. That as person is, probably the, the city have to hire a person to just to keep the data available and up to date all the time. The data must be clear of what services is being offered by the police department and show the place. Of the call of the complaints, the data must contain information of ethnicity, race, gender. And the reason for the interaction. To make the police department more transparent, we recommend that the. Quarterly, the police department give a report to the, to the public safety committee. These reports should include what type of the training the new police have taken. Most include, most include if any police had used excessive force. The reason of why excessive force was used, they should include whether, whether any case had referred or retracted justice program. And or any other data that the police chief understands is necessary to maintain the transparency of the police department. This community is of agreement that the police have joined the police data initiative. And is the report, as the report said. With this recommendation, we understand that the police will achieve transparency in their data. That's what I have for the second one.
I like the, I definitely agree with the police data initiative that we should definitely be members of that.
Yeah, I agree too.
So again, what I, what I want to do is again, use some of my language to include it to the Consul Derby. Report and Lindsay, you're, you're, you too, you said too. But I do believe the, the recommendation. One of the recommendations to, to keep transparency at the department is use the public safety committee. The same that the, the fire department is starting doing it and they're doing like a month ago. Come to us quarterly and give us a report. Hey, what is, what is happening with, with the training or with the new police officers that we have, what training they're taking? The data, use of force, all that information, anything should be available. And I think the platform is, is already here, that is the public safety committee.
I, I believe so too. I just want to, I guess I want to make sure that. The questions and the data points that we're getting reported on that, that, that's decided on. By not just the police, you know, just that they're, that they're the data that the community wants to see. So that's where I see the initial process of creating those data questions.
And that's why and language I said, I use some parameters. Like the, the, the report should have this, this and that. I have to read that again because my head is after my stuff. So like, like, and then you can add more included with Salem, I think want to include more like when I said the quarterly report should have. This, like the report should have include what type of training new, the new police officer has taken. Most include if any police that have been using excessive force, the reason of why the excessive force was used. You know, I, I, I think we should. Tell them the parameters, the what we want, what we want to know.
Yeah, well, to back up and like if we were to engage Westfield State. That third party working with the community and the police would generate that. And then we're the body or maybe we're the body that receives that regular reporting.
Yeah, and, and, and the way that I, that I see it too is these videos are being recorded. Even if we go to back to 50 page zone that I hope soon we go back there. Because this kind of type of work, it will be easier now. I, I know the pandemic is totally real and is, and is happening and is getting worse. I'm just, when, when I say we, I want to go back to 50 pages because I think this kind of type of work is being easier. And the same table with, with documentation and everything. But anyways. Yes, I do agree with that and I think they should use us because again, these meetings are being recorded. Public are allowed to attend and we're the face, we're the face of the public. The, the, the police safety in our community. Most of the concerns came to us, we deal with a lot of stuff and I think we should be that. That group of, of, or committee to provide that information to the community and I think that should open to be more transparent with the community. And, and if any from the community have any concern about that report. Quarterly, they can send us a feedback and then the next report, we can ask some questions.
Yeah, yeah.
So can I just add one thing?
Yes, sir.
So I, I think it, it would be, I, I agree with what you're saying and I, but I think it would also be beneficial to. Have that report in kind of a neutral area. You know, like maybe a, like if on our new website, if the police had like. You know, like a place where that information could be accessed by the public as well. And then, you know, and maybe, you know, whoever came to public safety to give that presentation could kind of summarize that data. You know, my only concern is that, you know, in the future, who knows? I mean, we're all laypeople as it relates to law enforcement, I, I would, you know. And, and, you know, you never, you never know who's going to be on the committee and how they're going to respond to that information. Without necessarily having the full context of it.
So I, I like your idea. I just want to know because I want to include it in the report. Do you think that report should be. Quality to and at the website? Because I think monthly is going to be kind of hard because getting someone to do and enter all the data.
This is why, sorry to interrupt, but this is why I'm like, really feel that if we engage a third-party academic institution. And there's interns, like there's a real possibility that. Third-party people are doing that data, you know, they're gathering it, working with the police to gather it, but they're putting it together. You know. Consolidating data in a way that's readable and. It takes a degree. I mean, that's a skill set that just, you know, just. I don't necessarily have it and police officers, you know, it's not part of their job requirement, so.
And that report should be posted on the city webpage and the police. Both.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of examples I was looking at when I was cruising other police websites, like some in Oregon and. Even Northampton because they're in the open police initiative where you can just see a lot of data just by looking that you can't see on ours. I think it's just besides the fact that it will help the police make, you know, decisions based on data, which I know they like to do. It will also, I think it will also be a good relationship though. I mean, I really see it as building trust with the community. As well, so I think there's just. A lot of positive. And like Omar, like I said, I'm happy to take a first crack at synthesizing the reports if you want.
Okay, perfect, yeah. And let me keep going.
Sorry, if you guys asked me any questions, I was in like a dead spot, so sorry about that.
Yeah, we just said if you don't, if you disagree, don't say anything and so you.
So, so for my third recommendation, I. I feel that this committee we should recommend to the mayor, like the report said, to create independent system where the community can file complaints. And so doing this, the community should be, feel more safe, uncomfortable to make complaints that they're, they don't feel comfortable to do now. Because they don't feel comfortable to make some complaints to the police department. I recommend that the, the, the mayor use the public safety. For, for this, if, if it is necessary or independent body, if she should create or the, the mayor, she, she, the mayor should create. When in conjunction with the, the chairperson of the public safety to create that, that committee if it is necessary. With doing this, I think that they will increase the. The transparency and strength oversight to the police department. What do you guys think about it?
I. Yeah. Yeah, I think whether it's just one, like a person investigator or if it's a committee, I, I just. I think that those people, whoever it is or the board. See, the, the thing that concerned me is just in terms of the resources, like I don't think there's a number of complaints coming in that. You would keep a board or a person that busy, you know, it's like you need them when you need them and then other times you wouldn't need them. And how do you make sure you get the right knowledge? I think it's really important that it's someone who's really knowledgeable or a board of people knowledgeable about policing. That's why I thought, so I definitely agree with your, it should be independent, it should be third. And that's why I thought maybe we had something we could collaborate with other communities because I don't think probably. Probably all the communities in the region, a lot of them, I mean, what if, what if we could collaborate with like Northampton, Southampton, Westhampton, or what about like a Western Mass Regional like? I just, I don't know because I don't have the data. It's probably, I don't know if it's available or I don't have it or what, but I don't know how many complaints actually go in, you know, so. I don't know what kind of like, could a full-time person serve? Six cities? I don't know. I have no idea, but I, I'm pretty sure that a person just working East Hampton wouldn't be working. I mean, I don't know, but I don't, you know, there wouldn't be enough fun one person.
It would probably have to be, you know, fall under the purview of say a human resources director or something, you know. Some, because I agree with Lindsay, I don't think it would be, the frequency would probably be hopefully relatively low. You know, and it definitely would not be able to support someone being full-time or, you know, a dedicated position for that, I don't think.
Okay. I do agree with you. Maybe the, the independent person should be human resources. In our committee, although we find out something, something else.
Or maybe we could have a consultant that works with her that we just hire as needed, like a retired, I just heard the retired police officers are often. Good in these positions because they understand. The culture and, you know, the inner workings of police departments and they can investigate in a way that other people might not be able to.
Yeah, because the cost of hiring someone that just going to work just sometimes is.
Maybe it's HR and then HR can handle it most of the time, but then when they're, when HR, it's out, like it's. Outside of their scope, they could have, you know, a consultant identified that they can work with.
I like that, Lindsay.
Maybe there's someone that already works for another city and wouldn't mind like mood lighting with our city.
I, I do like that and I, and, and I think the committee agrees the. There have to be another way for the committee to, to complain against some police officers.
Yeah, and I don't want to like single out police officers, just generally. In terms of, you know.
And called BDPW.
Yeah, it's like if you have a complaint with someone, you don't want to complain to that body.
To that body, yeah, yeah. All right, yeah, I do agree a hundred percent. So and the other stuff that I have is so similar that the Consul Derby post on. I mean, his report. So I basically, I do agree a hundred percent with you, Salem.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, no, you hit a, I don't, you hit out of the park talking in, in, in a baseball language.
Well, thanks for that.
Yeah, so. So basically that's what I have because I don't, again, four, five and six, I do agree with you a hundred percent Salem. And I don't think I should add anything else because I think you hit again out of the park, so I'm really happy with, with your statement.
Can I show you guys, can I show you a website that I?
Yes, you can.
That I would love if it would look, our city website would look like this?
Yes, you can.
This is Portland. But they're independent review. When you go into their, when you go to their website, look at these, look, look at these buttons, submit a complaint, interact with data. You know, it's just. I would love to have these two big blocks on our website as well. Like I think that's really cool.
I think that, that could be a great kind of target to shoot for, you know.
I, I do like it, but I still have a concern about that because it said, submit a complaint or, or recommendation about police, right? But, but I don't know where, where that's going. So I think.
Well, it goes to this, it's, it's this, it's the independent.
Okay, independent police review.
It's in the auditors, it's in the Portland City Auditor Department. That's interesting.
Interesting, huh?
So. There's, you know, like we're definitely, there's, we're not alone in this and there's a lot of good examples out there.
No, I really like it.
I mean, I think our biggest challenge is, you know, it's like we can look to places like Portland, but we have to figure out how scalability, you know, because. A thousand times bigger than us, you know. But we need to figure out the scalability part and, and I think Lindsay, that's where your idea about regional approach potentially is, I think could be a really good idea. And so that's something that I think that is worth kind of looking into.
Yep, I. Agree a hundred percent. So that's what we have. And I hear the clerk is more willing to happy to work with the language.
Yeah, I'll do, take a first crack at it if you want and then send it to you.
Okay, what about if we do this? Because I don't think, at least you got, you have something else, Salem?
What's that?
Do you have something else?
No, I do not.
All right, and do you have something else, Lindsay?
No, do you want to email me your report so I can put it all in the minutes?
Yes, what I want to do is. I want to meet if it is possible. The week of. September, the second week, week or maybe the 13 or 14, so that way we finish the report, we vote for it, we vote. On favor or against it, I hope it's in favor and we present that to the full city council the 15.
Wait, wait, tell me the date. I'm looking at my calendar.
Tuesday, the 14 is, is good for me.
The day. The number 14?
Yeah.
Okay. So we can, and then we bring it to the 15th of the meeting?
The 14 to have the meeting, the public safety and the 15, we have a city council meeting.
Right, do we need a little more time to have it on the agenda or no?
No, no, because it's already on the agenda.
Okay, we won't send the report ahead of time, okay. Okay, we won't send the report ahead of time. Okay. But did you have the report in people's hands ahead of time? I'm just wondering.
Oh, okay. I see your point. Um.
The seventh?
The seventh?
Uh, we have the ordinance review meeting tonight.
Um.
Um, the, the eighth?
Yeah, usually the, the, I don't know what is coming to the finance, usually Wednesday is for the, I mean, I can do a seven PM day.
Yeah, I can do seven PM.
Usually finance is at five PM.
That should be fine for me, too.
The eight. All right, let's do the eight. We're gonna do, have the meeting, the. Next meeting's gonna be September. And, uh, we're gonna do a seven PM, right?
Yep.
Um, yeah.
Okay, perfect. I will send my, um, what I have of my recommendation to you, Lindsay, that way you can work with the language and add it to the last report.
Okay.
That works. Perfect. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion at second, Consul Roachchild.
Yes.
Consul Derby.
Yes.
And I say, yes, have a wonderful day.
All right. Thanks, guys. Take care.
See you, Salem. Bye.
Bye.